Call to order, Van Buren County Court is now in session. The Honorable Chairman Terry Hickey is presiding.
Roll call please.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Kel Crane.
Here.
Jordan DeLong.
Here.
Tab the Denny.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Mr. Mabel, lead us a word of prayer.
Dear heaven and father, just thank you God for your goodness today. God, we pray, Lord, that you, as we're here, Father, that you would just help us, Lord, to make our sound and right decisions that would best fit this county and this community. And we just give you praise and honor for all your goodness in Jesus' name, amen.
It's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five on the agenda for minutes of August 20th, as prenied.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Kenny made the motion, Mr. Crane second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number six, Committee A.
I'd like to make an amendment in the agenda and go ahead and let Mr. Brock present your awards, I'm assuming you've got tonight. Oh, I make a motion to do that.
I'll second.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've got a couple members of the awards committee here tonight, so I appreciate them being here. Upon being duly elected as sheriff two years ago, I always felt that to be successful, it was imperative to surround myself with a good team of men and women on the department. I met with the employees of the previous administration and discussed my plans as the new sheriff. Of those employees, there was one who stood out that was willing to put forth the effort to make the necessary changes to see the Van Buren County Sheriff's Department move forward. That is Corrections Sergeant Patricia Simons. The new administration began its work, and I learned quickly that Sergeant Simons was self-motivated and driven to do the absolute best job she could do, not only for her own satisfaction, but for the entire Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Simons has a wealth of knowledge and experience that makes her an integral element to this sheriff's office. She has been someone we've leaned on to train and instruct the new corrections officers that we've brought on board. Each time an opportunity for the department to become better and to become more efficient, Sergeant Simons was spearheading the way. Many of the opportunities to improve have come through work sessions where Sergeant Simons provided key information and ideas for progress. Not only is Sergeant Simons a great team member, but I've learned that many times she sacrifices her own time and resources to better the sheriff's office and jail. Sergeant Simons subscribes to the Broken Windows Theory, which states that visible signs of disorder, no matter how small, must be attended to before they become larger problems. Sergeant Simons has purchased items out of her own pocket, out of her own pocket, to do preventative maintenance to the building, such as paint, caulking, cleaning supplies, not because she was asked to, but because she saw the need and could not ignore it. And I'll say many of those times that I didn't know and no one else knew that she was, that she had done it. Many times, a maintenance request would be submitted by the jail only to find that Sergeant Simons had already taken the initiative to fix or to find a solution for it. Things may go unnoticed by many, but are very much appreciated in, some of the things that go unnoticed by many, but are very much appreciated by me, and one of those is the care of the grounds and the building. It has been Sergeant Simons who faithfully ensures that the grounds are mowed, trimmed, and the building's been pressure washed numerous times under her supervision by the trustees. It's been Sergeant Simons who would go to the roof, work on it, to ensure the proper placement of the tarts where we are required to use due to the faulty skylights. In a time where it seems folks can walk by a job that needs to be done and never see the need to actually do anything about it, the work ethic of Sergeant Simons is greatly appreciated and admired. I read something that made me think of Sergeant Simons. A leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way. Sergeant Patricia Simons, you are a valuable member to this team and a true asset to the sheriff's office and to the citizens of Van Buren County. So I'd like to ask Sergeant Simons to come forward. So I've got co, not co-conspirators, but co-employees of the month, or quarter, I'm sorry. Some of you may have seen this on a Facebook post, goes a long way and says a whole lot, but on August the 8th, 2024, Mr. Don Ecker and his wife, along with their dog, were on vacation, driving from Indiana to camp at Falk Creek Falls State Park. According to Mr. Ecker, the trip was going smoothly until their truck broke down on Highway 111 in Spencer. His wife was barely able to get cell phone signal, but finally made contact with the Van Buren County Dispatch Center requesting assistance. Chief Deputy Stuart Caldwell arrived on scene, assessed the problem, and recommended a tow service with a reputable mechanic. James Wright from Ed Rogers Chevrolet arrived within 30 minutes and determined that he could make the repairs on scene without having to tow the truck back to the shop. While the mechanic drove back to the shop for the parts, Chief Caldwell stayed on scene to ensure the safety of the Eckers and to comfort them to the best of his ability, offering them to sit in his vehicle and offered them cold drinks that he had with him and the use of his cell phone to make any notifications to their family, seeing that they were in 90-plus degree heat. Within an hour, the mechanic returned with the parts and was able to make the needed repairs. While this encounter with a disabled motorist may seem routine or mundane, to the Ecker family, it was a crisis, and a crisis avoided during a time when they were away from home in an unfamiliar location. Mr. Ecker shared his encounter on Facebook to show his appreciation for what many would perceive as Chief Caldwell simply doing his job. However, Mr. Ecker felt it was important for the sheriff and the public to know how much they appreciated what Chief Deputy Caldwell had done for them, and as tourists, they would definitely be returning to Van Buren County in the future. All too often, law enforcement is taken for granted, and the good works are overshadowed by negative postings on social media. Mr. Ecker and his family simply wanted to say thank you and for everyone to know that their long-anticipated family vacation could have easily been turned into a vacation nightmare had it not been for the compassion and professionalism displayed by Chief Deputy Stuart Caldwell. Stuart, you are a true asset to the sheriff's office and to the Van Buren, and to the citizens of Van Buren County. I'm going to ask Chief Stuart Caldwell, Count. Thank you, Commissioner. We've got a great team of folks here, I appreciate it.
All right. Number six, approve/disapprove Committee A. We discussed insurance, some of y'all do know maybe that we are looking at going with another insurance company. We have found out that, a couple of different things. A, the insurance company we have is not giving us the best rates, and B, we're not putting enough in on the insurance, the county-wise. We discussed on which tier we wanted to go with, and I think we're going to go with, what, salary tier, is that right, Tabitha? What we send in for them, for salaries. We've not got nothing back yet, they're still trying to, you know, get everything together. But as soon as we get something else, we'll make sure to get everybody, so everybody knows what's going on with the insurance for open enrollment. There's nothing really to approve or disapprove on the insurance. Yeah, okay. Number two in line six, libraries move $1,492 from 101-3900025, or excuse me, 2101-56500-599 to cover MOE. And I'll go ahead and make a motion, if nobody has questions, to go forward and approve that.
Do I hear her second?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
Hodges.
Hodges, okay. Roll call please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Tab the Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carried.
Number three in line six, updated travel policy for Van Buren County. Does anybody have any questions about it? I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the new travel policy, or the updated travel policy.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
Chandler.
Chandler. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number four, this'll look familiar to everybody. Sheriff's Department to move $2,100 from 39000 to 54150-499 for safety equipment vehicle, and move $17,900 from 39000 to 54150-718 for vehicle. Fund 122, drug fund. And we did that last meeting, but, or I remember what we're having to redo is the fund that was coming out of was wrong, correct, well, he's done left. But it wasn't Fund 122. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve that one more time.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Tab the Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carried.
Yeah, that meeting was adjourned.
Relation of chairmen's and vice chairman, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor at this time, let him do that.
Okay, at this time, what this is, is a mistake on my part last year, because we're supposed to redo a chairman each year, and I failed to do that last year, so that's the reason this is on here tonight. So as of right now, the floor is now open for nominations for chairman for the year '24 to '25. Do I have any nominations?
I'll nominate Kel Crane.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other nominations? I hear a motion, will you elect the acclamation?
A motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, likewise? This motion passes. Mr. Terry, you're back in charge.
We've got to have a vice chairman.
Got to have, the floor is now open for vice chairman. Now you take control, Mel, because you're back in charge.
Make a motion for Tab the Denny to be vice chairman.
I'll second. Chandler.
So, anybody want, any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. When do I take office, David?
No, it's done right now.
The baby, David.
We can do it from this seat, just as much as that seat, pal. All right, next order of business will be approve/disapprove to keep Committee A and Committee B the same for year '24 and '25.
I'll make a motion, leave it like it is.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Chandler, seconded by Ms. Denny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairman stay the same. All right, any old business, David?
I don't have any.
Anybody have any old business?
How's the health department going?
Health Department, they, they were closed for a week, and pictures, I have pictures I can show anyone that wants to see them after we was there, where apparently they doing real well. Because the state has a person there that is overseeing the, their work, and he has to sign off on it before we will have to do anything.
What's the expected date for the gentleman to put up the pole barn and the building and concrete?
We talked to him again today, and they're supposed to be here tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they're supposed to call last week, and I'm supposed to meet them out there. So that's, that's what they told us today.
Any old business? All right, anybody have any new business?
Yes, new business, what we have on Warren Utilities, the resolution there that we got after all, after the agendas had been put out there, and so we need to address that. I don't know if anyone's here or not there, but we do need to address that.
Motion to approve or disapprove this?
Yeah, just, yeah, approve/disapprove the resolution there.
Anybody want to make a motion on any?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
That's all in favor. All in favor, or vote? We'll just do a roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Tab the Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
All right, resolution, pass. Anything else, David?
Under old business, Barrett College.
New business?
No, not under old business, no.
More on new business.
Yeah, no, under new, oh, wait, wait a minute, tongue tied. New business, the old Barrett College Library, there's also, there's a lease and a deed here.
Okay.
And with that lease, you can read over it there for that Child Advocacy Center to, them to lease it from the county for a year, actually. We, yeah, four years rather, I'm sorry, and a renewal option also under that right there.
Anybody have any questions? I believe she's here to answer any of she has got, any?
One of the things that I wanted to ask is that we be able to come once a year to present to you all, to tell you what we're doing, and the numbers of people that we're serving, and that way you're updated on our usage of the building and, and how we are doing business there, and how we're serving Van Buren County.
I think we would very much appreciate that.
Or I can even come quarterly, either way, I just want to be able to give you all updates.
We like to hear positive things.
I do too, so I'm very excited about this. Does anyone have any questions?
Make a motion, we approve the lease agreement.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the agreement by Denny, seconded by Chandler, is that correct? Just informed, we should do the approve or disapprove of the quick claim deed first and then approve the lease agreement. I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Quick claim deed is deeding the property back to Van Buren County from the Illumina Association.
Yes.
Is what it is. Not, we're not deeding the advocacy center, the building, you see what I'm saying? It says coming back to the county and they were leasing it to them.
It's a county building, we're just leasing it to them.
Got a motion by Mr. Chandler, seconded by Ms. Denny. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Tab the Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
I go with that same motion. Do I need to do a new one? Okay. All right, now we can do the lease agreement.
I'll approve the lease agreement, yes.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Hickey to approve, seconded by Mr. DeLong. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Tab the Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Motion.
Just want to say thank you all so very much. This will really allow us to do so much more for Van Buren County and the children and families that live here, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. All right, got next little order.
What I've got there, at the convenience center where they took the old garage doors down, there's a person that's asked if they could buy them, and also the old 1994 truck, three-quarter ton, where the, it's, I think it started leaking oil out of the motor, and you know, we, we had to park it, which the gas tank is bad on it also, and I would like to have a motion there for us to be able to bid these out and for y'all to set a bid price, if you have a minimum price that we'd want to start at on them. One of the, the old garage doors is fair shape, and the other one is, is not real good shape, you know, it was been all pieces where it'd been run over so many times. So do y'all want to put a minimum bid, or me just bring the bids back to you that we received?
Bring the bids back, that you receive for it.
Make a motion on that?
I'll second, Phil.
Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Tab the Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
You want to do it on the truck, or is that for both of them?
Both.
It'd be for both if it's, if it's okay.
That's fine, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Don't try and put them both on the same bid sheet whenever we bid them out, because they're both at the same location. Anyone wanted to look at them? Because they are as is.
Is that all you got?
That's all I have.
We got the Capital Waste Services, where they're going up in price, you got to approve the, to take this bid, or?
Well, it's, it's not in effect, it won't go into effect, I think, sometime in October.
October, okay.
Do we need to accept that now, or? Audit was saying that we didn't, because all the companies are, you know, the same. We didn't get one last year, so when we put, put a bid out the other day, you know, to getting ready for December, for whenever we have to start doing things again, then just a few days after we'd got the, sent the bids out, then we received that increase. then we received that increased price from then.
Okay, on this, if anybody has any questions, it's basically the, uh, capital waste is where we dump our trash and it's the tonnage. It's going up and I believe this is going to lock us in on a 12-month rate of $65. I'm not a hundred percent sure, it was $56, $57 a ton.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. I, I don't, I failed to get the exact number tonight.
I can't remember either. It's went up and went up on us a couple of times. This will be to lock us in for 12 months at $65 a ton. Do I, hear a motion?
Is this just, is this the state waste too?
Yes, it's for all of them, yeah. The county and the contracted waste.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it'd be for all penalties that goes in, but we charge the state 70 right now on, on theirs, so we're going to be losing a few dollars each ton that goes in.
Well, from our contract.
Well, from our contract.
We're going to be losing $8 a ton, because I think we're at 75, aren't we?
That's my memory. Too many numbers have been across the table since then. That's my memory, it's 70, 75, and it's somewhere right in there. And they, they've went up on us twice or three times when we first started, so.
We don't have no control over this because there's nobody else you can go to.
No, and this would be up, kind of setting a contract deal to set in a rate that they don't go up for at least a year. And I feel like that would probably be good because there's really nowhere else right now, as of today, that we can take our trash that's local enough and close enough to us.
This just sets the rate, it doesn't require us to take it there if somewhere else opens, correct?
If there's another landfill that does open close by, are we, we're not?
We're not set to this, we're just setting the price if we take it there.
We don't, we don't have a contract with capital waste, so this, this would kind of be that. We'd be locked in for that for 12 months. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the $65 for 12 months. Per ton.
Motion by Ms. Denny. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Roll call.
Michael Chandler, Kell, Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Taffeta Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freddy.
Yes.
You got salaries, so you need, all right.
This is an amendment that we're requesting, um, annually, uh, for all of the post-certified law enforcement officers that we have. Uh, if those officers complete their required training as laid down by the state, then the state issues a salary supplement check, is what it's called, to them annually. Um, there was a pool of money that the state of Tennessee had. Uh, we received notification from the state that all of those officers who had qualified for the salary supplement during the year of 2023 and had received that salary supplement in the early months of 2024, if they were still currently employed as full-time law enforcement, the state of Tennessee was going to give them an additional $800 salary supplement, retention bonus, whatever you want to call it. Um, so at the time, we had six on our roster who, uh, qualified for that. So we have received the payment from the state of Tennessee of, uh, $4,800 received into, uh, 46210, and we're asking for that amendment be made to transfer those funds into 54110, 140, so we can pay those guys. This is not Van Buren County money, not coming from any of us, this came from the state of Tennessee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Chandler seconded it.
Chandler got it. Motion by Mr. Hickey to approve, seconded by Mr. Chandler. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Taffeta Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freddy.
Yes.
Got any more new business? Does anybody have any new business? All right, moving on. Any comments or anything from the crowd?
We've wanted to have a satellite location for the Children's Advocacy Center for quite some time and we just really are so thankful and appreciative that it's going to become a reality.
Thank you all for all the work you put into it, we appreciate that.
Make a motion adjourned.
Any second? All right, thought we were going to stay on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Make the adjourn.